Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of Darien Zoning Board of Appeals. A few sort of ground rules. If you've got a cellular device, which most of us do, please make sure it's either off or on vibrate so it doesn't interrupt the meeting. If you are going to present, please present from the podium. We can't, these meetings are transcribed and you won't be picked up from the audience. So if you want to speak, please come up to the podium, give us your name, and speak from there. We generally deliberate at the end of the meeting tonight. If you'd like, you're welcome to stay for the deliberations, but you are not allowed to speak during the deliberations.
You know where the EPC meeting is?
We're in the middle of a meeting. I don't know.
Somewhere else in the building, I think.
With all that being said, we'll go ahead and go to our first item on the agenda, calendar number nine, 2019. Miller River Financial for eighteen Charles Street. If you're here on that application, please step up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
We are requesting to have...
Yeah, I was with your name first.
I'm sorry, my name is Davis Owen. I'm one of the members of Miller River Financial.
Okay.
We are requesting an eight-foot portico from the setback to do a one-story covered porch in order for it to facilitate a smoother landing and be able to go from the front porch to the driveway and have a walkway that is functional as well.
That was succinct.
As sure as I've ever heard it. So the proposed is only half a percent, or half a foot, it's nineteen versus nineteen point five?
Yes.
And what is the hardship?
It's that we're just not able to do what we want to with the covered porch with the front portico, having to be with the eight-foot columns, so that way it draws more of the attention to the center of the home, and that way it doesn't appear to be as hard.
It's design-related, it is not functionality-related?
Correct.
Woody, is it consistent with our five-foot by eight-foot policy?
I believe it is now. The initial proposal was wider.
Correct.
Cut it back to the way it's being normally used.
What is it?
I think it's just four feet out from the face of the building.
And how what?
Eight feet, eight feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it actually says seven on here.
And do you know what the total coverage is of the project? Is it within twenty percent?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I believe it is.
Okay.
What was the question, Larry?
The coverage.
Coverage.
I asked if the coverage was more than twenty percent.
We have a chart here, I think nineteen point five.
Yeah. Okay, so is that what that is?
Where'd you see that from?
It's eight-four, right? I think there was, I believe there was a glitch with the server there previously, too, and then that was revised, cleaned up. So that actually allowed it to fit in without being over the twenty percent.
Did you have a discussion with the staff at all about the pitch of the porch roof?
No, there was no discussion about that.
It's, let me show you something.
Yes, sir.
Here. In red, I think, is what you have proposed, and you can see sketched in green above that to sort of make it pitched more so that it matches, you know, all of the, all of the other, you know, portions of the house that are pitched. Is that something you could do?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, in order to grant a variance, we need to have a hardship, we need to find a hardship that is unique to the property and the nature of the property. We, as a board, have determined that in situations like this, the hardship is a safety issue. We live in the Northeast, we live with inclement weather, so we have snow and ice, and to make landings more safe and appropriate for the climate we live in, we look at that as an issue. Is that one of the reasons why you would be making an application?
Yes, so it would be so it would fit the structures better.
Right.
So it would have a better pitch instead of the flat roof as well that we were going to propose originally.
Okay.
So ice and snow and weather and safety are in fact an issue with this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Woody, do you have anything further? Anybody on the board have anything further?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
On your survey, did you factor in your air conditioning unit, your HVAC unit into the coverage?
Off the top of my head, I do not know, but that I don't know.
They're not placed on your survey, so...
Okay.
I didn't see a survey, actually. What is this, oh, is that a full survey?
I think it's attached to the architecture.
Well, it's not an A2, but...
So, just to be clear for the record, we are not granting you a coverage variance, so you will have to find a place where those can be placed if you don't have enough coverage or you'll have to reduce the footprint of your, of your front porch.
Understood.
With that...
So I think that he's going to have to check with staff and make sure the coverage is, you know...
Correct.
Confirmed before the building permit is issued.
Yep.
I'll come in here tomorrow and do that. Absolutely.
Is...
Why don't we make that a stipulation?
Well, we're not going to deliberate quite yet. Let's, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calendar number twelve, 2019, Stephen Jones and Patley Home Designs on behalf of Mary and Philip Hamilton. This is for nineteen Raymond Heights.
Good evening. I am Stephen Jones. I'm a project designer for nineteen Raymond Heights. Tonight, we're asking for a variance for three improvement items on the, on the house that's being remodeled currently. The design that's there now has been approved by the ZBA previously, and we have these three amendments that we're asking for variances on tonight. And those three items are the dormers on the west-facing roof, the portico over the front door, which is only fifteen inches deep, so it's a low-relief portico. It's not very functional, but we minimize that just to keep back from the front yard setback. And the tapered chimney versus a brick extension. So we have a tapered shingle chimney that we're asking for a variance on. So the three dormers that we're talking about are on the west side of the property. Here's the setback. Here is the buildable area on this property. And we have that substandard width road between the front. So those three dormers, the portico over the front entry, the entry is currently on the side and it has a wood landing, and it was approved for a portico over it, a larger portico. So we're actually taking up less area than the original portico, and we're removing the landing. So we're actually improving the conformity of that. This is only fifteen inches deep, so it lines up with the front soffit here that's already on the building. And the tapered chimney needs to be built on the existing chimney foundation, so it's the same dimensions as the existing chimney. It's just one of the wood-framed shingle-clat tapered chimneys. And you can see the dormer peeking out here. And what's partially driving this is we're after that New England cottage look for the building. I did want to talk a little bit about what was driving these three improvements. That wasn't on the first variance request, and that really is that the owners had the winter to look at, at the building, the design. Builders came in and quoted on it. So it's a combination of input from realtors, builders, homeowners, neighbors, on what they should do. And one of the things that, that bothered a few people was that there wasn't a front door, that it was a side door to the house. So that's driving that change. On the second floor, those dormers, what became apparent was how narrow when you came up the stairs this little hallway was and how narrow the bathroom was. And it was dormer, so that as you went into the bathroom, the toilet was sort of tucked under, you know, the shed dormer area. So we pushed out the dormer here, and they wanted to push out a dormer here and here. So there's three shed dormers, and they have smaller windows in them. And this was to provide a little work nook in the bedroom, each of the bedrooms, and across the foundation, because there's only windows at the end. Also, at the top of the stairs, the two of the children are going to live here, and the laundry room is in the basement. So they wanted to do a laundry room nook at the top of the stairs and a linen closet, which we didn't have room for before, so we ended up having to push that bathroom out a little bit, and hence, you know, needed the dormer here as well. Another thing that happened was the engineering moved the bedroom wall this way, and so we ended up pushing the room a little bit to the west. So those, those drivers led to these dormers. The builder came in and looked at the fireplace, and the fireplace had to be rebuilt, it wasn't working. And the cost of doing that exceeded the cost of putting a propane fireplace in with a new chimney, because they would have to take down the chimney anyway. So that sort of presented an opportunity to go from a brick chimney to a shingle-clat chimney. And that, the current landing is right here for the entry to the house, so they're going to turn this into a basinary landing here, flip the door where the windows are now, just put a small window over the door. So really, it's just relocating that front door. And then it was really a design need that this door looked funny without a little portico over it. So we did what we considered to be a minimal, minimal portico over that front door.
What is, how do you, can you quantify that?
Well, it's only fifteen inches deep, and it's flush with the soffit that's here. So that soffit runs straight across. This roof is set back a little bit, so then it goes back to that roof here, gives it, gives it sort of the illusion that it's more of a portico than it is. So that was the minimum that you could get, that kind of graphic look without coming forward Those were the things that were driving it, and then another item that you have in your set there is the neighbors' homes on the street. Well, here's, here's the house that was under construction this spring. So here's where we're talking about putting the tapered chimney, the front entry, portico, and dormers. And these are the neighbors' houses on that street. And if you know that street, it's absurdly narrow, and most of the properties, some of them are just off the street. This one, actually, the center line of the street is eight and a half feet from the property line. So when you take the half-acre zone, a very restricted half-acre zone for these lots, which are less than a fifth of an acre, it has that sixty-five-foot-deep setback. So the two hardships really are the half-acre zone being so restrictive for a fifth-acre lot, and the substandard street where we have a sixty-five-foot setback from the center line of the street. And all the homes on the street are either two-story with a full two-stories or a story and a half, like their house, the Hamilton's house, with dormers. And this, in fact, is, is the neighbor's house to the west of theirs, where we're going to put the dormers on this side of that house here.
Can I see a rear elevation?
Yes.
Please. There you go.
There's the rear of the house.
And those...
The dormers are entirely new or they're just pushed out further?
The one for the bathroom was there. There was a small dormer there, but it was just for the window.
I mean, versus, versus the previously approved variance?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it, there was a small one right here, but it had to be pushed all of the, well, this one in particular had to be pushed out to make room for that bathroom.
So dormer left and dormer right are new with new windows, correct?
Yes, and this one, this one had, it was just smaller.
I understand. My concern is these windows look to the left neighbor, and, and, you know, these houses are close together.
Yeah.
So...
That neighbor has no windows on its...
On its side?
On its side, yeah. Doesn't look at the house at all.
Did you get any pushback from the neighbors, Steve?
No, in fact, there's letters that I think, Woody has, from, from the media neighbors saying that they're on board with this, that they...
With the new plan?
Yes.
Woody, you have those letters?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, one of the things we've struggled with when we've had a variance approved, and you're lucky that Mr. Green isn't here tonight, because he's the biggest opponent to this, is that, you know, how do we justify this as being the minimum adjustment necessary when we've, we've just been through this process and determined that the previous plan was the minimum adjustment necessary?
Well, I think the needs were a little bit different on the previous plan, that, you know, both, they got the financing, they could afford to view the dormers, they got input from, from people during that period between the ZBA approval. We came in with eliminating plans, really, to try and make sure we could do the house, get the financing, get the engineering done, get the quotes from all the builders. So during that process, they, there was a learning curve, and they started, you know, looking at what was wrong with the house, with the design, proposed design. So there were a few shortcomings in that first design, and I think, you know, had we had spent more time with it, this is what we would have liked to have come in with originally. And this speaks to the need for the laundry nook in the second floor, the linen closet, things that we just didn't have. We had the bare bones of, of a bathroom, you know, the shower, and two bedrooms.
But that's, I mean, that's sort of my point, is, isn't that the minimum you need to have a bathroom there? And thus the...
It's the minimum to have a bathroom, but what they really wanted was the laundry nook and linen closet. And we managed to get that in, in the minimum, but everyone's like, it's so tight when you get to the top of the stairs, the hallway was only like three and a half feet wide. So there was...
Yeah, the problem is, is that it's increasing the volume in the setback.
But we are improving the footprint, and we're not...
So talk to me about that. What, what's, you're improving it where?
We're taking the canopy off, not, not in the dormers, but in the front of the house, we're taking the, which is, so, well, off here, there's a portico and a wood landing with a rail. That's taking, being taken off the house, that's in the setback. So we're taking that, and that's about nineteen square feet, and we're putting this on, and this is only about six or seven square feet.
You said, just for the record, when you say this, you were pointing to the portico?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. So how many square feet is, is the house?
Living space?
Yeah.
It's twenty-three hundred square.
Twenty-three hundred, okay. So you've got three...
That's with all the improvements.
So you've got three things we're asking for, the chimney, and that's going to be in the second place.
Yeah, so the chimney is really cosmetic.
And it's a little higher?
Yeah, no higher than the original one. That's set by code, how high you have to go with that.
And you got the three dormers with the side yard issue?
Yeah.
And then the front portico, and I see in the I O K, it's called a bass relief, what, excuse me?
Bow leaf?
I don't know, I'm not sure I understand that term, so...
Low, that means a low relief?
Low impact, yeah.
In architecture, so it doesn't come forward very much.
Sort of like...
It's a minimal face of a portico.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's only fifteen inches deep.
Okay. And how much closer to it, to the, to the setback line, to the road? I mean, how much more of a variance are you requesting for the, for the front portico?
Nine inches.
Than, than what we gave you?
Nine inches, I think, for that, if you're talking about this corner of the building.
Yeah.
But other parts of the building are closer to the road, so, and it doesn't have any, none of those things have any effect on the, on the closest parts of the building.
So even if we grant you this, you have other parts of the building that are closer to the road than, than the portico?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So it doesn't change that. If this was a, you know, a one-fifth acre zoning, the, the building would be totally in compliance, and, and it didn't have the substandard for the street. So those two items, that half-acre zoning and the substandard street are why we're here. Otherwise, it was a normal situation, the house would be in total conformity.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Woody? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on to calendar number thirteen, 2019, the application of Michael P. Murray on behalf of Kevin M. and Jean Noel T. Roche, Four O Crest.
My name is Michael Murray on behalf of the Roches. We're here tonight for a variance request for their property at Four O Crest, and the issues before us are a, a rear setback variance request as well as a front, and also, just to point out that we are currently above the allowable coverage at twenty-two point four percent. The application or the proposed project will not increase that coverage at all. It's, it will remain the same because we're just going, hopefully going above. So the, I, I should point out that the lot in question was, was subdivided before Darien Zoning back in nineteen twenty, and the lot is in the half-acre zone, but is only point one seven of an acre, which creates a real, very, very restrictive building envelope, which I believe you have in your packet. Mr. Woodside did, drew on the survey we initially submitted, I got to him one later, but they're both the same, so you can see it pretty well, pretty well laid out. You know, like I said, it doesn't increase the, the coverage. We looked at what our options were, and we believe this is the least restrictive option that we have. It's, it's pretty tight over there, and we're hoping that, that you agree.
Is the house for sale?
It is, and that's sort of what spurred this application. You know, it's a very tricky real estate environment right now, and potential buyer after potential buyer, everybody had the same story. Need another bathroom, need another bath. And so with this extra room, it's sort of undecided right now as to whether the Roches will remain or whether they're doing this for a buyer. We just don't know how, how that's going to work out.
How many bathrooms does it have now?
Two.
Two.
One on the first floor, one on the second.
And what's the square footage of the house now?
Twenty-one hundred.
I'm sorry, twenty-one hundred, and I think this will...
We need you to...
Yeah.
You've got to answer the question.
Yeah, I'm Kevin Roche, I live in Four O Crest. It's just over twenty-one hundred square feet.
Okay.
And there's two baths?
Yes.
How about the neighbor to the west? Any objection?
The opposite. Actually, Mr. Yell gave me a call and said he's in full support of it, which is nice.
Did you look for any ways where you might be able to reduce your coverage while you're going through this?
Yes, there was a prior application, I want to say about six or seven years ago, for, for HVAC equipment?
Yeah.
And that issue was sort of addressed there. We had to give up a Bilco door and some eaves, so at this juncture, there really, there really isn't. I'd love to have the Bilco door back. Oh, if I might point out that at that point, we did come down two percent in, in how that shook out.
It's pretty tough with this undersized, sized lot to, to conform in all respects. Okay. Any questions from the board? Chuck, you have anything?
I don't know.
Okay. Woody?
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? Seeing no one, uh, yeah, we'll go ahead and close the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the application of Jim Cusidis, of Cusidis Engineering, if I pronounce that right, on behalf of Christopher and Letia Emmane for a property at Thirteen I apologize for butchering anyone's names if I did that. I'm trying.
Good evening. Jim Cusidis, Cusidis Engineering LLC. I wasn't in the room, so I didn't hear.
Oh, good.
I'm here representing the owners, and Bob Shannon is also with us, he's the project architect on this. We are seeking a variance for section four oh six of the planning and zoning regulations, encroaching into the front setback. I just put the site development plan up here for a minute just to go over some land restrictions, restrictions at the property, which forced us to move the residence forward to the, to the west. North is facing up. To the west, there is a knoll up here that creates steep slopes, so the house cannot move any more to the west without major regrading in that area. To the east, we have utilized the existing driveway that is there now, the existing entrance to the driveway, and we've shifted the, the house to the west to meet the eastern setback. The existing house encroaches that setback, and it is only nine point six feet away from the, from the property line. Also, there is, the, the most significant land restriction on this property is the wetland pocket in the southern, in the middle of the backyard, basically, that we are trying to stay out of, and I believe the EPC Commission appreciated that. We met with that, or we presented the application to them last Wednesday, and they voted to, for approval, basically, at their next regular meeting.
Rob, so approval of what?
Of...
What did they approve?
We are, we are encroaching the fifty, this, this...
Oh, you are, you are within fifty feet of that little wetlands area?
Correct.
I see.
We are within fifty feet of that wetlands area, so we have to go in front of them to seek approvals.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say that you have been in front of them, or you're going to be in front of them?
No, we have.
And they approved it?
Not officially. They moved, they voted to approve it at their next regular meeting without going to a public hearing. They are seeking resolution from the staff to approve it at their next public hearing. They don't vote at the same...
Sounds like they're waiting for us to make a decision.
No, no, that's, that's not true, I'm sorry. Normally, they don't make a, a decision the night of the hearing. They always wait a month to decide. So it was either going to be an approval at their next regular meeting, or it will be a, a full public hearing.
How close is your proposal to that wetlands? Obviously within fifty feet, so...
Yes, it's approximately fifteen feet.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, yes, fifteen. The significance in that, in that wetland is, it's, it's the soil type itself in what it provides.
I mean, there's no water there, right? I mean, it's lawn, right?
It's lawn, yes, and there's no, there's no wildlife in it or, but it, it still provides what a wetland soil will provide to the area, which, it provides groundwater recharge, it holds water when everything else is dry around it. So that's, it's the functionality of a wetland, not that it holds water at all times.
Did, did the EPC ask you, and it's not really their venue, it's mine, ours, but, but did they ask you, I mean, the house is quite deep, it's fifty feet deep.
Yeah.
Did they ask you if you could make it shallower, for lack of a better word?
They did not.
They did not? I don't even know if they're allowed to ask that type of question.
Sure they are.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, so you're knocking the whole thing down?
Yes.
What's there now?
The existing house is coming down.
Everything's coming down?
Yes. I don't know if you can see, it's a very light reddish outline where the existing house is compared to the proposed.
Yeah, I can see it on what I have here.
Okay. So the front encroachment, the existing house encroaches the front property line. Well, it is set back sixteen point six feet from the front property line, the existing residence. Under proposed conditions- Under proposed conditions, the building itself is twenty-five point one feet away. So it's approximately four and a half feet away. The existing house, you can see this corner right here is sixteen, sixteen point one feet from the front property line. The U-house is twenty-five point one feet, the main house and the front cover porch is twenty point three.
So you're making it a little bit better on the side in terms of reducing that non-conformity. But how, how many square feet is this going to be?
The house is approximately, first and second floors are about forty-
Sorry.
Mine's Bob Shagnon from Bob Shagnon Residential Design.
Yeah.
First and second floor are about forty-seven hundred square feet.
How many bedrooms?
Well, there's- There's, there's five actual bedrooms. I know that my, my proposed plan states seven in case. But, but that's for the health department more of how they count bedrooms. When there's a full bathroom in the attic, they count that as a bedroom. And when there's a full bathroom in the basement, they count that as a bedroom. So it's a true five-bedroom.
Yeah, they go by bat, number of bathrooms.
I guess the question I have is, you know, why can't you just shift the whole house back behind the setback line and be totally conforming with the regulations? What, what prevents you from doing that?
The, the wetland area.
If you could reduce the mass of the house, you could make a smaller house.
How big do you say the house is?
Forty-seven hundred square- Yeah, forty-seven hundred square feet. If, if, one thing we have going for is that the, if the whole house, right now, if the wetlands weren't there, if we put it over, it would conform. It would conform for coverage of height and all the setbacks. So essentially, you know, we're trying to get what the homeowners want as far as the design of the house. And, you know, we, we looked at trying to lengthen the house so that it wouldn't go out as far. And it gets into that rocky knoll on the right, which we would have to dig into. So we were trying to see if we can have the porch in the back and the breakfast stove on the back. Those would be the only two rooms, I think, that could be shifted or moved. But like I said, it would get into the, the grading area on the, on the rating side. We have a couple images.
Do you have any photos at all?
It would require blasting to get into the rock, is that-
Blasting or chipping.
Any, any chance you know how, how big the house is that you want to take down?
I don't know.
I'd be curious to know what, what, I mean, are we going from two thousand to forty-seven or are we going from-
Well, forty-seven hundred square feet is first and second floor. So we're, the, the footprint is probably twenty-three hundred square feet. I don't know off the top of my head, I didn't calculate that.
Okay. I just want to know how, how much we're increasing the mass and structure.
Well, the total coverage from the, on the existing house was seven point six percent and now we're going to be at thirteen point seven.
Okay. That kind of does it for me. Okay. That answers my question.
Right.
So you're not maxing it out?
No, we're not maxing it out. We're seven percent under.
That's fine. Okay.
The existing house is twenty-five forty. Realtor. Twenty-five, it's three bedroom, three bath.
Total square footage?
Twenty-five forty is the total square footage.
So essentially double.
Right, but you can see the, this is where the ledge knoll is on the, on the rating side of the property. And if we had tried to elongate the house, it gets into that and we get into cutting, filled and blasting. So the house was placed where it was is based on, we were trying to have a happy medium between the wetland setback and the building setback. Because right now, there's only about fourteen feet between the two setbacks.
Say that again?
There's only four, between the, the wetland setback-
Yeah.
And, you can kind of see here. The blue line is the wetland setback and the purple line is the building setback. There's fourteen feet between the two.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So there's really nowhere to put the house without going over one, one setback or the other.
And the houses around it are massive. There's seventy-six hundred square feet.
Right, I mean, again, we, we had another seven percent that we could have played with to max it out and-
So you were conservative?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
One more, can I, can I ask you?
Yes, sure.
Sir, so you're fifteen feet from, from the wetlands, you said. Is that, is that fifteen feet from the wetlands edge to the proposed wall that you have?
Yes, to the proposed patio wall, yes.
The patio wall?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, that means twenty feet to the house.
And that fifteen feet gives us enough room to excavate, to have access around that wall without encroaching into the wetlands. I don't think we can go any further closer without really disturbing the wetland soils.
What's the patio materials? Is it stone, like a stone terrace or is it an elevated wood?
No, it's going to be in, well, it's supposed to be an elevator patio, but it's, it's wood. Uh, sorry. Stone.
Okay.
So you said the EPB has, has sort of unofficially given you a sort of a nod of approval-
Correct.
On this, and you're expecting the formal approval next month or whatever?
Yes, next month.
Now, I'm just wondering, I mean, if you were going to them and said, you know, you want to put that patio five feet from the edge of the wetlands, what their, what their response would have been? You know, and I'm sort of speculative, I mean, because I'm just wondering how significant this wetlands really is. It was just covered with grass. In any event, it's, it's, I guess it's a more hypothetical, so I'm not even going to ask you to answer it.
Are they asking you-
I'm thinking out loud.
Have they asked you to do any restorative work to the wetlands?
No, they just asked us to plant, because that's part of the backyard.
Right.
They didn't, they, they allowed us to keep it as long.
Okay.
They just asked us to do some plantings to the southeast corner of the property.
Okay, so there is some remediation plan for-
Yes.
To counteract and make sure that the, okay.
Correct.
What are you planting?
We were gonna, after their approval, after the formal approval, we're gonna talk to staff and take their recommendation in conjunction with what the owners would like to see and plant that area. They didn't per se ask for a landscape plan. But we will work with them. If they do ask for one, we will provide one.
Okay. Woody, did you have something?
Yeah, a couple things. I think you mentioned forty-seven hundred square feet for the first and second floor.
Correct.
But there is a full basement, right? There is a full attic.
We have plans for a basement. Again, there is ledges present on the property, so we aren't a hundred percent sure we want to get a basement. It's going to be something that's going to be determined at the time of taking.
But aren't there, aren't there like two thousand more square feet in the, in the design?
Uh, no, well, not two thousand more square feet. The, basically, it was not a thousand square feet, it was, we're trying to stay less than-
What's in the attic? Let's start with that.
The attic?
Yeah, I might have misunderstood, but didn't you say there was a bathroom in the attic and a bathroom in the basement? Or did I misunderstand?
I don't believe they're proposing-
Well, we have a future bath listed as in, in the attic. And the attic's worth, what it is, five hundred and fifty square feet.
And the basement?
A thousand, you said?
Thousand. The basement's a thousand and the attic's fifty.
I think the point is it's a pretty big house. The other, the other fundamental question is, what happens if the wetland disappears, goes away, it gets filled in? Or something else?
I think it's already been filled in. It's lawn.
Due to the nature of the grading, I think it's always going to be wet, just based on the hills and how the water's going to run off.
Well, can I step in here? Because the state statute doesn't allow us just to fill in the wetland.
Right.
So I, I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, you can fill in any wetlands if nobody is looking, but I don't think we're allowed to fill in a wetland that's been established.
Is it, is it a drainage issue that makes it a wetland? Or is it, there's standing water?
It seems that, it seems that way, that over time, if I had to speculate, then it would be that over time, fines settled in that area created a wetland soil type, a very poorly draining soil situation. I think that's what we have. Over time, I don't know the time, is it a thousand years? Is it a hundred years? I'm not sure.
And there's a, you'll, well, you'll be required to do a drainage, was there a drainage plan done on this, Woody?
Yeah.
Stormwater management and all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we, we prepared a stormwater analysis and we also prepared a septic system design, which already has been approved by the health department.
Okay. Any further, Woody? No? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishes to be heard on this application? Nope? Okay.
Should we talk about the front porch encroachment? I just want to make sure that we don't miss that.
Certainly how wide it is.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was, it's designed as five feet deep off the house and twelve feet wide. The reasoning for that is that, is one, for the mass of the house and the scale, from here to here, the scale of it, eight feet wide didn't seem appropriate. However, the owners desired to have a double door for the entrance, which makes it six feet wide and in my opinion, it's a safety, because these columns would overlap the, the casing on it. Because they're twelve-inch columns, again, proportionate with the house. And the twelve foot wide, actually, it, it helped architecture fill in front of the house and not seem like it was just a door, a roof over the front door. But with the double door, I feel unsafe to step out and have the landing end right, six inches to your right or four to your right. Then I was trying to maintain the five feet and knowing that the hardship of the property being that, that the wetlands in the back, if that wasn't there, the whole thing would conform. You could push it back.
Okay.
Is the desired double door an aesthetic thing?
I mean, it's, it's not aesthetic to the front. I think it's a desire, it's a, a feature that the homeowner would like. It'd actually be wider if we had a door and double sidelines. It'd be, I'd be almost seven-six versus six feet.
Okay. Thank you very much for your application. We'll go ahead and close this hearing. With all of that completed, we can move on to deliberations and decisions. So we will start the hearing. The first application was application nine, twenty nineteen. I think it was pretty clear from the application that there was a safety issue relating to the size and shape of the portico, of the, porch, front porch and the, and the cover and the, and the overhang there that, that creates into the setbacks. We've sort of found that in those situations, if you conform with a five-foot by eight-foot structure, that, that's the minimum adjustment necessary. Anyone else have anything? I think I did hardship, minimum adjustment necessary and-
No.
Safety issues, so. Was there, Woody, we would put our standards or stipulations on this for it not to be enclosed in the future. You know, closer to the front yard, all that sort of stuff.
And Michael, they're going to change the pitch.
Yeah, there was a, there was a, I guess a staff question about the pitch, whether it should conform to the other pitch, pitches on this, on this, I mean, I, that doesn't-
It's not glaring, but I like it. For as a Realtor, I like it. I wanted to match the pitch.
Are you suggesting we put that as a stip or is that just a suggestion?
Suggestion.
I would make it a suggestion.
If they want to conform with it, they can. If they don't, they can stick with the application.
Yeah, I think, I agree with that because, you know, we, we were in deliberation here, so we can, we can talk really fast. But we had an issue not long ago, a couple of months ago, Woody, where the pitch, we made, we made this guy reduce the pitch so it didn't match the roof. Now we're doing the opposite where the pitch is going to match the roof.
So we make it a stipulation, it's more formal. That's fine, it's just a recommendation and it looks good.
Just to make the recommendation, otherwise it's not going to, it's, yeah.
We'll ask that they work with staff to-
Yeah.
To determine that.
Yeah.
So with those stipulations-
I thought there was one more too. Wasn't there something about the twenty percent? I think you wanted to make sure that it's a-
Oh, yeah, the twenty percent coverage.
Yes, thanks.
They're not being granted a coverage variance, thanks Chuck. And they need to find conforming locations for their utilities and HVAC units and all that sort of stuff.
So can I ask a question about the HVAC stuff? Did P and Z exempt that from coverage?
Some of the equipment up to, I think it's twenty square feet, each unit not more than nine.
Okay.
Yes, could be exempted.
So they can do that?
Surveyors have to figure that out.
Right.
So it's an exemption for some overhang and all that.
Okay.
So their, their surveyor can sort through all that with? With those items, I'll make a motion to approve?
Yeah, let's just make sure, I'll, I'll say that, let's just make sure that they, they conform prior to issuing of a building permit, please. And I did second the motion.
Jeff second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next application is twelve, twenty nineteen. Nineteen Raymond Heights. You know, I struggle with the minimum adjustment necessary on applications like this, just like Gary does. You know, it's, it's hard when the applicant comes back after just recently receiving a variance to ask for more. I also, just as a side note, didn't really like the fact that the first application that came in front of us was sort of a trial to see if they could get something. And then they come back, I mean, it'd be a horrible precedent to set, that people just do a trial application and then they come back with their real application. You know, we've also struggled with, with the use of the property, with, with people coming in and saying it just doesn't conform to our specific type of use and how you get to the minimum adjustment necessary there. Obviously, I think there's a hardship on this property. The building area is not sufficient to support a house. And I think that's a result of change in the zoning regulations. I think there's also an issue with the width of the right away, so there, there are some clear hardships. I just struggle with the minimum adjustment. And I don't know if anyone else feels differently or the same.
Well, there's three separate variant, I mean-
There are.
We're talking about the chimney.
There are.
So that really, I mean, I don't think that needs variance or if it does. It certainly is very similar to what they had.
Right.
Like, so, I mean, as far as the chimney is concerned, I mean, I, I could certainly vote in favor of that.
Yeah, let's do one at a time. Chimney, I'm okay with the chimney.
I'm okay with the chimney too, and I'm okay with the front porch.
Yeah, I think I might be okay with the front porch as well. I, I, I just think that, I don't see any reason to penalize them for presenting us something that perhaps more modest than it should have been when they came in. I think the issue is the dormers really, for me.
Okay.
Same.
Yeah, same.
So, the-
Clearly we spent too much time.
Yeah. So I guess, here's a question, was anyone, was anyone moved by the argument that they're improving by removing the wood landing? That they're improving the condition on the site such that we'd be justified in-
Talking about the space on the second floor, the three and a half foot landing?
No.
No, the wood landing outside is nineteen.
Oh, I like that they were getting rid of something. I like that.
It's nineteen square feet and-
It's down to six square feet or six or seven.
Yes, I believe it's seven.
I was, I was swayed by that.
Vic?
I'm okay.
You okay with the dormers?
Well, I thought that removing the landing provides the reason for the front, the front front portico.
True, I'm okay with the portico. I think, I think we're all on board with the portico.
We're trying to justify the dormers based on the chimney.
I thought you were making an argument that reducing this landing gives you reason for the dormers.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh, that was a question?
That is a question.
Oh.
That's a question I posed.
I mean, I am-
You mean, does it, does it justify the portico? Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Well, I was looking at the removal of that in conjunction with the portico.
Right.
The removal of that.
Yes.
I'm struggling to, to how it fits in with the dormers.
I think they're removing volume from one part of the property and asking for more on the other side of the property.
Right.
Is, is the argument. And coupled with the fact that their neighboring property doesn't have any windows on that side of their house.
But you could just...
Not now, I was just going to say the same thing.
Yeah, but, I mean...
These things get knocked down and you're built.
You could make the center dormer just bigger. You've got 12 feet to play with, right? If you take off... The front porch was 19, it's now six to seven, so let's say it's 12. You could make that center dormer bigger. It gives them a usable bathroom, but it doesn't allow for the linen closet and the upstairs laundry, which were not in the original application.
Kind of a wonder why it was going to be...
Uh, I don't know. Do we should redesign the, redesign it for them? I mean...
No.
No, I think it's, I think it's going to the minimum adjustment necessary, right? Like, is, is there another alternative that they could have done?
I think there is. That's my point. There is another alternative.
Not that, not that we want to redesign it, but, but we're, we're stuck with the application as it sits before us. I mean, I, I honestly, um, I honestly don't buy into Gary's logic that we can't, you know, it's too soon and therefore we can't make adjustments to the plan. Um, I think there's clearly a hardship here. And, um, you know, I think, you know, they've proposed something that they think is a minimum adjustment necessary. I struggle with it a little bit, but, but based on the size of this lot, a building envelope, I, I, I'm inclined to, to allow it.
All of it?
All of it.
I'm two out of three.
Me too.
Okay.
Vic?
Yeah, I can be convinced of that. Two out of three.
Okay.
He's struggling with the, the portico.
Barb? On the portico, you got to swap on the portico, so I mean, I justify that.
Yeah, no, I think two out of three. I mean, I think it's, it's not the minimum adjustment on the dormer portion.
Yeah, so, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance with respect to the chimney, uh, as well as the front portico and deny it as to the dormers.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Would we, would we give any advice as to whether they should come back with a revised plan?
I, I, I think they could if they want, sure. I mean, is there a time limit? There's a time limit though, isn't there, on these things?
Well, we closed, so we can't, they can't do it under this application.
No, no, I mean, I mean, before you can do another application after having...
For the same, for the same thing. They'd have to substantially change it.
Yeah.
So if they switch from three dormers to one wider, that might qualify.
But if, Barb, if I understood you correctly, if they lose the other two dormers, they lose the laundry room and the, and the...
Linen closets, from what I understand. That the key issue, from what I understood, when you talked about designs, when you come up the landing, the hallway is narrow, it's three-and-a-half feet. The bathroom is right there, and the way the bathroom's configured in that dormer doesn't work. So they enlarged that dormer and then they've added two other ones.
And the two other ones allow for the linen closet and the washroom.
There may be something, there's no, the other ones in office and the bedroom.
I think they said bedroom nooks.
There's a bedroom nook area.
In each of the front bedrooms.
And then the other end, the far dormer, was the laundry linen closet, which... That's what I'm struggling with. I mean, it makes sense. It's, it's nice to have that on the second floor.
Well, yeah, you know, the laundry's in the basement right now. Well, my laundry's in the basement. There you go.
I don't even have laundry jobs.
Well, oh, here we go. That's true.
Don't even get me started.
I know, I know.
Okay, so, so you've got a motion, motion to approve?
It wasn't, it wasn't seconded, though.
No? So there's a standing motion to approve two of the variances and deny the third?
I think I second that. I'll second that.
There's a second?
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor?
I'm gonna go, um...
Is that a yes or no?
That's a, that's a yes, but I tell you...
It's 4-1.
It's a tough call because it's improvement.
Yeah.
Are you in favor or not?
Uh, I'm in, I'm, I'm in favor of Chuck's motion.
Okay.
No dormers.
4-1.
That's tough.
It is tough.
Yeah, that one was tough.
Okay. Uh, on to Application 13, 2019, Roach Application. This is for, uh, the construction of second-story space, uh, over an already existing, uh, dwelling. Again, the hardship here is the nature of the lot. It's a massively undersized lot in a half-acre zone. It's .1748 acres.
Oh, okay.
Roach.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Murray's.
So I think we've got a hardship, um, and I think because of the nature of the lot and the fact that they are not, uh, increasing the footprint any, they've already been to us and reduced their coverage, uh, and really cut it back to as close to the 20% as they can. I really didn't have any issues. I don't know if anyone else...
I don't.
My issue is there are no little houses left in Darien. I don't mind the two bathrooms. That is not related to ZBA, but I'm saying, it upsets me that every house is getting smaller.
But related to this application, Barb, do you have any issues?
No, I don't have any issues, I guess, related to the application.
Go ahead. Could you add something?
No, I'm good. I'm fine.
I have no issues, Mike.
We found a hardship. I think that the proposed plan is a minimum adjustment necessary, uh, to allow them the beneficial use of their property. Um, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Just before you do that, it's a little strange that the reason they're doing that, the whole thing is to sell the house.
I think they're getting answers so they can tell people that it's a possibility, because it makes the house more marketable then.
So they may not, they may not do the work. They will just say that a variance has been approved.
Which is really valuable. If you're trying to market a house and you say, "Look, we went in front of ZBA and they signed off on this," then you are 90% there.
Yeah, chances are, they might, they might not even do it, but, I mean, I don't care if they do or they don't. I mean, it's a decision that we have to make whether we're going to allow it now or in the future. And it just adds value to the property, similar to commercial land, when we get approvals to build 200 units, once you get these...
I get what they're saying, though. It's interesting. It's just strange. Yeah, like, they may never execute on it, but...
Right. Yeah, but I don't think that changes the decision, right? There's still a hardship. It's still the minimum adjustment necessary.
It shouldn't really impact...
And, and if the buyers don't like it, they're going to run into an issue like we ran into with the dormers, where they may not get a revised approval.
Anything, I mean, I think it's smart. It's smart preparation.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a double-edged sword.
In this tricky real estate market, Barb, I mean, excuse Mr. Murray's comment, you know? People, you know, people are doing what they have to do.
Right, I just, I just...
And I don't think there's too much wrong with this. Go ahead.
Uh, I just think it's important to note that when these applications are being made, like we've seen with, with, just previously, we had to deny a, a revision to it because, you know, we've already made a determination. So people need to be a little bit more careful when they come in and, and make that application that that's what they want to build. So, you know, to, I, I would, I would disagree with your point, Barb, a little bit, in that, you know, it might disserve the new owner if this plan's approved.
They don't go with this plan.
Yeah.
That's true.
They want to do something different, so, just, you know, just to be careful about that. I made a motion to approve. Did I get a second? Seconded by Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, 4-1. Interesting tonight.
Interesting, very interesting, Mike.
All right. Uh, calendar number 14, 2019. This is a rather large house on a rather large, a small lot. The justification here, I think, is that they are substantially improving a non-conformity by moving the, uh, lot into a more, or, excuse me, the house into a more conforming location. There are also unique and very specific, uh, items on this property, uh, including the wetlands and this knoll that make, uh, the property distinct. And so I see those as the justification for, for a variance and a, and a basis for hardship. I think what we're going to struggle with here is whether this is the minimum adjustment necessary. You know, it is, uh, it's new construction. You know, there are limitations on how close you can get to the wetlands, uh, and I think, you know, maybe it was clever of them to go to the Wetlands Commission and get a half-approval beforehand so that we couldn't ask the question, "Well, why aren't you moving it back the extra five, 10 feet that you, you could?" You know, we can, we can sort of if, and, or but our way through that, but I think we're, we're stuck with the application that's, that's in front of us. So, um, the only item I think that was sort of a real, a true nice-to-have, and I think that was actually the words that were used in the presentation, was the double doors, front door that, that created a, a fairly substantial, uh, proposed front porch. So I would suggest that get cut back to what we've found to be the minimum adjustment necessary, uh, just earlier tonight on an application. Woody, to that five-by-eight size. Anyone else have anything? Any comments, any?
Do you think this, do you think the size of the house is the minimum adjustment? I mean, could it be a smaller house?
It could be. It could be, certainly, um, but...
But the coverage is well within.
Coverage is well within.
And how much further, uh, would it be from the wetlands if they made it smaller? I don't really know.
I don't know either.
And I, I kind of wanted to ask, but I didn't want to jump all over the existing... Hang on a second. This may answer the question.
That's the existing.
Yeah, that's what, exactly what I wanted to know. So, where are the wetlands? Over here. So it's going this much closer to the wetlands. That's what I wanted to know.
And a lot of it's patio. It's 25 feet to the house.
And 15 feet to the patio.
I mean, we could ask them to, to shrink the patio and, and move the front into a more conforming location.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling with the minimum adjustment necessary. I mean, how can you not? Under these circumstances. You know, it's funny to go in front of the EPP first and it sort of locks, locks you in to a, to a situation that may, may not have been a problem if they had come in first. But nevertheless, we can't, can't do anything about that. So, you know, the patio... I mean, why can't the patio go to the left?
Yeah.
Off the covered porch?
I'm going to make some sort of walkway. We're getting into sort of redesigning their application again. So I, I think if we're going to go down that route, we should encourage them to come back with a revised application.
I feel like you have to. Every time, I mean, we see this time and time again, and we make people come back. What's the one next to the Token Eek Club that we just did that with? They came back with a better design. It was more compliant. It worked better for the homeowner.
I mean, the positive here is that they are reducing a non-conformity, so that, that's a good thing.
Substantially.
Yeah, uh, but, you know, they're knocking the house down. And there's a lot of room there to build a house, just not that particular size house. I mean, they're entitled to any size house they want, but it has to be, you know, reasonably consistent with our regulations. You know, is the non-conformity reduction enough? Is the question for me, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it is. I, I honestly, I think, you know, I, I think the only way they could do this is if, if they shrunk the, the patio size. And I guess we did, we didn't ask that question, but, um...
Well, we didn't.
I'm sure they considered it in, in preparing, preparing this, uh, this plan.
Well, I mean, there is, you know, they talked about the chipping, I mean, for the amount of money that's going to be spent to build this house. You know, chipping away, uh, some, some ledge for a patio, I don't think is a, you know, a significant percentage increase in the amount of money that's going to be spent. But I'm on the fence on this. I mean, I'll, I'll go with the flow.
Woody, what, oh, it's a 15-foot differential between where the front is currently?
Right. They're basically asking for a 15-foot front wall setback, and then there's the front porch thing.
Vic?
I don't know. I'm kind of with Chuck. I'm on the fence.
Yeah, me too, and, um, the basement bathroom is bothersome. Barb, where, where are you?
I'm a no.
You're a firm no.
I like, I love the design of the house. I think there's more ways to build it on this property. That reduce the overall coverage and place it further from the wetlands.
Well, the coverage is okay, Barb. You mean just to get it back behind the setbacks?
Yeah, I do. I think within the buildable area, there are more options.
I tend to agree.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, okay. Woody, you're diligently taking notes. Any thoughts?
Let me offer something that's troubling to me here. I think it's also troubling to, uh, EPC staff. What happens to this lawn and wetland? I mean, if that's the only justification for these front setbacks, if they're going to maintain it as grass, it has no ecological wetland value, just a sponge for some water. And what if they bring in three truckloads of fill and level it out, pitch it or change it?
You mean while nobody's looking?
Yeah, or otherwise. Or they apply to EPC to fill it. Does the variance go away because the wetland is no longer there? How do you, how do you craft a decision around?
How do you grandfather in the wetland?
A questionable wetland.
Well...
You can stipulate that it never be touched and then...
And if the, if the wetland is created by drainage, as opposed to existing marshes and things like that, could they fix the drainage and eliminate the, the wetland?
No, wetlands based on, on a type of soil, right?
Soil?
Yes.
Not, not water?
No. It's based on soil, so...
And it's usually based on elevation, too?
Not necessarily. It's, it's just the type of soil, it, it retains, it retains whatever. We're not the EPC. I'm not going in. I've, I've got a long history with wetlands. But, but the reality is, Woody, anybody could do that, right? Anybody could, you know, I mean, it, it's...
So what if we find out in five or 10 years that the wetlands totally filled in with three feet of fill?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a enforcement issue for, for EPC, right? I mean, they need to go back and make them remediate, and they've done that.
And take it out, because that's the only justification for the variance.
I mean, they've done that. I know they've done...
That sounds weird.
They've done that in Token Eek where people have gone in and put in truckloads of fill, and the EPC goes in and says, "No, that's in a wetland area. You need to remove it and reestablish the wetlands." So I think, I, I don't, that doesn't trouble me so much. I do struggle with the minimum adjustment. It's, um, it's not, I mean, it's a big house. It's not, it's not massive for that area. I mean, they're not maxing out on coverage. They're not, I mean...
The one to the right is smaller than the one to the left is much bigger. That, it's, it's in keeping with the area, but they're just, I just, there's other options. I understand blasting. I mean, I had a house on the market where they had to blast to build, and you do it. It's...
Okay.
So it's not the size of the house is bothering you particularly. It's the position of the house?
That, and, I mean, to squeeze 4,700 square feet where it doesn't belong is what bothers me. If you want to push 4,700 square feet back into the buildable area, I'm great with that.
That's what I mean. The location and the position.
Yeah, I don't think 4,700 square feet's the issue. I mean, they're, they're well within...
Not particularly. Who cares?
The scale of the home.
That's Chuck's, uh, build any size house you want.
Right.
It's within, reasonably within our regulations.
And I like the design of it. It's not that either.
It's beautiful, huh?
It is.
Yeah, I agree.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
All in favor? I think I'm in favor right of all.
Just redesign, okay?
Okay, Woody, on to other business.
A couple things you've mentioned, yes.
Judy, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. Okay. We're all, we're all done here, so you're welcome to stay, I guess, but... Not with them.
Mike, Chuck, Jeff and Vic.
I'm sorry, what, I'm sorry.
I think you were all there.
What'd you say?
You were all there. Talk about the April 24 minutes. We're looking for an approval of those.
I'll make a motion.
And you were all there.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That was the night we had the executive session down the hall. Everybody was...
May 21st, are we approving those also?
Yeah, that was the, uh, redeliberation session we had a couple of weeks ago.
With Seskey?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll approve that. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So Woody, so it's not, it's not so much that we, we approve these things and email, we have to do it at the hearing as well?
Yeah, officially.
Okay, fine. I just, well... Okay, fine. Whatever you say. I just, well, then I guess I don't have to respond to the emails anymore.
Can I make a, um, can I make a?
Summary ones, though. Let me just say, the, the short ones that we post on the website, those we do need your blessing to get it on the website.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. So I'm gonna make a motion to add two additional items to the agenda, a motion to add, do we need election of officers? We need election of officers tonight, right?
Good to do, yeah.
Motion to add election of officers, and a motion to add the 2020 meeting schedule as an agenda item.
A second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, election of officers? Is that you and I again?
I nominate Mike Neder as the chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the upcoming calendar year. And Mr. Jeffrey Williams as the, what are you?
Co-chair?
Co-chair? Vice chair?
Vice chair.
Vice chair. Of the zoning board of appeals.
I don't know if I can support that. I don't know.
It's gonna be a free to vote, but I'm on your side.
Jeff's out. Jeff's.
Hey, listen, don't, don't do me any favors. He was missing for six months, this guy.
I know. You guys are great. I, I second that.
Do we vote?
I don't know. Do we?
I get to vote for myself in a presidential election.
Well, I'll vote for Neder.
One at a time, and then three of you are gonna vote for the chair, and three of you are gonna vote for the vice.
So this is what we'll do. You get four, okay, so I vote for Neder. Okay.
Wait, Chuck, Chuck made the proposal, right?
Right, Vic seconded.
Okay, I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Okay, of, yes. Michael is president.
Yes.
Okay.
Do it one at a time?
And then all in favor of?
Jeff can vote.
Oh, I vote on Neder.
Okay, okay, okay. All in favor of Jeff?
Four and one abstention.
Four and one abstention, and then you get to Williams and.
Three, two.
One and three, and four.
Williams passed a deciding vote.
Three, two.
Not in favor.
At all services, it's four, four oh one.
So you gotta switch it up. Two different motions for the.
I abstain on myself.
I'll make a motion that Jeff Williams serve as vice chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the upcoming year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks so much. Okay.
Okay, and the last item.
Let me just.
Scheduled, do we fix September 11th? Yes.
Yes, we're, we're not doing September.
That was this year.
And Woody, I.
Next year, we don't have to worry about September 11th.
Woody, I see you watched yourself on March 17th. That was good, good boy on that, or good man, whatever.
Attaboy.
Yeah, so it's all the different Jewish holidays and other things.
Yep.
And this confirms.
Mr. Green's.
This recognizes the school holidays?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So I think this year, we ended up having one over a school holiday.
I hope not, but.
Okay.
Well, I can say, it takes a while sometimes to get those board of the calendar, especially for the end of 2020. You know, it's a year and a half out.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve. The calendar is presented.
Mm-hmm, and I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
You already signed.
Beautiful.
Uh, anything else, Woody?
No, thank you, but someone meet September 25th.
Wow.
The 11th.
I may have a conflict on that night.
Okay, well, I'll work it out.
That's the next meeting, September 25th?
Yeah, no chance.
So we only got one incomplete application in the last three days.
What's he doing?
We have none new applications to handle in July.
Okay.
There's a ton of space.
So we don't need.
Wow.
Care about that, because I'm not dealing with Nick.
Don't do it, Nick. You'll fuck.
Um, no, not.
No, I don't have any, I'm, I'm out of space.
Oh, really?
I gave back one of the.
Oh, you did?
Oh, sorry, channel 79, we're done for the night. Oh, sorry, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Sorry, channel 79, we're, we're done for the night.